Good morning. It is 10:00 AM on February 7, 2023. We'll call to order the meeting of the Story County Board of Supervisors. Please stand with me if you're able and say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to adopt today's agenda?
So moved.
Second. Moved and seconded. Merkin.
Aye.
Hens.
Aye.
Basil.
Aye.
Now it's time for public comment number one. This comment period is for the public to address topics on today's agenda. Anyone wishing to make public comment, you can raise your hand on Zoom or step forward to the table. Seeing no one will close public comment number one and move to a presentation on the Iowa Stormwater Education Partnership. Good morning.
Okay. Pat, we have become members of the Iowa Stormwater Education Partnership. So I'm gonna let her do the presenting. And.
Advance.
Is that okay?
Yep.
Okay.
Can I stand or do I need to sit?
Yeah, if you want to stand, you could stand at the podium if you wanted to.
Go under.
We just have to make sure we get you on microphone.
Well, good morning, everyone. I am the executive director of the Iowa Stormwater Education Partnership.
Point the microphone just right up so we make sure we get you. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Sounds good. So the mission, we're a nonprofit organization. Our mission is to promote stormwater best management practices through awareness, education, and training. The vision is to engage our community leaders to, on how to protect and improve and utilize diverse water resources to grow thriving, healthy, and resilient communities. So that's pretty broad, isn't it? And advance please. And so in urban areas, I know there's a difference between urban and agriculture, rural areas, but in urban areas, it's that street-to-stream connection. Most people do not realize that the storm drains in the street, any pollutants, excess fertilizers, pet waste, you name it, that washes off into the storm drain, literally discharges out to our streams without being treated unless there are practices in place. Advance please. So we're looking at what can we do with stormwater? Flood protection is number one, but we also need to address water quality issues too. Next slide, please. And looking at our urban landscapes through the development process as well, the soils and the hydrology and the landscape completely change through that process. And if we don't make adjustments for that, that is going to impact potential flooding as well as water quality. This is an example of, I'm a stormwater geek, so I look at this. This is a newer development in Ankeny. They completed the development, added the turf, and the soils were so heavily compacted and there was such little topsoil. After it rains, the water doesn't go down. It oozes up over the curve and onto the street. So we're getting more runoff to our streams a lot faster. Next slide, please. So essentially what we do is there are cities in the state, forty-some cities, the three state universities that have regulated stormwater programs. The county is not regulated, so you can say, oh, thank goodness, but there are some counties in the United States that are. But we support them, but we're also supporting others as a result of supporting them because of the stormwater connection. So being aware of statewide and national regulatory requirements of there are some legislative concerns right now for stormwater management. There's a pending legis, not pending legislation filed, legislation that the county would be interested in. But we also have this educational resource program, which is why you have joined our organization. And what we do is, I'll get it slides later. So we have an educational resource program. We provide training on all topics related to stormwater, everything from construction site erosion and sediment control to green infrastructure, green stormwater infrastructure and natural systems, provide member support. And then I talked about the legislative part of it. Next slide, please. So these are the different stormwater permits. Don't have time to get into them. You mainly would be impacted by this first one on construction site in the county. And then if you have post-construction regulatory requirements, next slide, please. So with the, through the educational program is we create three educational toolkits per year. They have a focus, they have a theme, and our members provide that input. So we either, either we're kind of in transition, we'll probably meet in person once, used to all be in person, once a year so everyone can see each other, but we'll meet, provide the toolkit information, explain how the tools can be used. Another benefit of our, and I should also say, the resources that we create, any entity that's a member, you can add your logo. You can have local pictures. We can switch things out, switch some of the wording. This is an example of watershed brochure that we have. It's a general view of watershed concept, but we have an insert that can be specific for each watershed that's in a community or in a county. So training, well, training events, all members get 50% discount on any of our training events. That's everything from the stormwater conference to everything related to stormwater design, post-construction and construction site erosion and sediment control. Next slide, please. An example of one of our campaigns through the educational program, we started this last year, 22 on 22. So on the 22nd of every month, we encourage everyone to pick up 22 pieces of trash. This year it's 23. And guess what I found, having done this is, I find a lot more than 23 pieces of trash. But on our website, we have, through this campaign, there's directions on how you can do this, implement this campaign locally, but on our website, if a group or an individual wants to sign up, we can, you know, you can do that and pledge. This year I'm gonna, I'm gonna do this every month of the year. Next slide, please. Outreach resources. You also have access, believe it or not, to a life-size fish mascot called gill. We have two gills in the state of Iowa. You should probably be at least five foot six to wear gill, having worn gill several times. And we have additional resources. As you can see on the right, we have watershed model, a marble model that the really, the kids really love, and they can see what happens to stormwater. And then we also have a wheel of water, kind of the wheel of fortune where you can spin it. And we're creating a magnetic model of a yard and all the different practices you can use in yard, a rain barrel, a rain garden and such. So that's under production right now. Next slide. And then we really promote green stormwater infrastructure pretty, pretty heavily. And I know as a county you're familiar with, with that, but it's everything from a rain garden, as you can see on the left, to enhancing urban landscapes through, where else can we put native landscaping? And then more on the engineered side of it. Next slide, please. Actually, this is not as engineered. It's doing as simply as having, a lot of cities are developing cost share programs. Airating the lawn, we all aerate top dressing with compost, so those heavily disturbed soils after development, we can improve those soils so they function better. Next slide, please. And then looking at stormwater wetlands and then permeable pavers. If you want to see something really cool, go to Charles City, West Union. They have, Charles City has 28 blocks of permeable pavers. That's all stormwater management. The paver's not permeable. It's little spaces, little tabs. The water enters there, goes to these underground beds of rock, is treated before it's discharged to the storm sewer. Next slide, please. And that may be the last one. So that is it in a very quick and fast nutshell. So.
Thanks, Pat. Yeah, so if you guys have any questions for her. So we decided as our internal working group to become members of ISWAP. And I think Amelia, Planning and Development and Facilities, will get a lot of use and support. And I know the city of Ames is a member, but the other local cities in the county are not. So a great opportunity for us to support them.
So with the county being a member, can we, since we represent all of Story County, can we provide some of these resources to our smaller cities, small communities? Because they probably don't have the resources to really join.
We haven't tested that. I'm gonna say yes.
Thank you.
I'm gonna say yes because I understand how small some of these small communities are.
And we have a lot of them represented on our watershed management authorities and flood prevention and all stormwater issues are part of what WMAs are supposed to be looking at. So I think we could, we could really get some information out there and be helpful.
Yeah, yeah. And they, they may or may not be aware, I know Story City probably is, may use these funds, that as far as implementing green infrastructure, there's some funding available from the state. If they update their wastewater treatment plant, there's a loan option that's there to implement green infrastructure locally. And some other funds too. So, yeah.
There are a lot of updates to wastewater treatment plants happening right now. So.
Yes, yeah.
Good.
Nevada is doing it, yep.
Great.
Okay.
Well, thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks for presenting. For sure. Next, we will move to agency reports. We've got environmental health quarterly report. Kimberly.
I got the quarterly report for environmental health, and I know I submitted that to you guys in writing. I don't know, I'm just gonna kind of do some highlights of things. Basically, I know our pools, tanning and tattoo programs, all those inspections are underway right now. Probably by end of April, we'll see that those come to completion right before our septic and our outdoor pool season starts. So we should get those going. Laura's being trained. So right now it's still just Matt that primarily does them, and then he's training Laura out there as we go. So she'll be working independently probably in the next couple of weeks. And then as far as we had, we haven't had like a whole lot of complaints, the ones that we have had since last update, where we had some illegal waste dumping from a pumper truck from a different county. So DNR is handling, we went out and handled the investigation and now DNR is handling that as they were in violation of their contract. And then we had just some burning of solid waste and we provided some, told them to stop and provided some education on that. The other ones were in incorporated areas where we couldn't help out too much. So as far as our indoor air quality, we had, January was our rate on awareness month. We did the proclamation. We had a goal of 25 kits being given away. We gave around 36. And we'll probably have a fifty between public and internal, like county employees. So we thought it was a pretty good, pretty good outreach this year. I think last year we were maybe in like the, right around like 20, 25, somewhere in there. So we thought it was a, it was a good year and we actually have some insight on a few grants that we might try to look into for the future as well. So as far as our onsite program, we are still, our maintenance contracts for our septic systems, those are underway. We have most of those under compliance now. We have a few outliers and we're working on getting those up to date. But all of our permits and inspections have been pretty consistent compared to like last year and stuff too. So we, let's see, we do, we do have that new housing, Story County Housing Trust, and bring it for our septics. We just went through some training so that we could do the income verification. And we're going to be getting those, and our applications, we're redoing and getting those approved by them. And so we have a few people that are waiting for those to be done and then hopefully we'll be promoting that out over the next year. So as far as, and then our wealth program, everything is good. We've been updating our promotional materials for our grants to counties to, and we have some different ideas that we're gonna do some mailings to hopefully get some more interest in people doing the free water sampling that we provide. We don't see as much of it here as what maybe some other counties do, so we've been talking to other counties, figuring out what they do and trying to increase our outreach. Let's see. And then pretty much staff-wise, we had Haley start January 4th for our new admin position. That's going great. She's done a lot of her trainings as far as, you know, becoming a notary and doing the different in-house things that she needs to do, and that's going well. Laura passed her installer exam, so that was good. And Matt's getting ready to do his recertification for his pool inspector. So other than that, it's kind of the highlights of what we have going on. It's kind of a slow time of year for us.
Any questions?
Guys, you're busy.
Yeah, for a slow time of year.
Yeah.
It's taking a lot.
All right.
Well, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll move to consideration of minutes from January 31, 2023.
I move approval of minutes.
Second. Moved and seconded. Hens.
Aye.
Merkin.
Aye.
Basil.
Aye.
Consideration of personnel actions.
I move approval of personal actions is presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Merkin.
Aye.
Hens.
Aye.
Basil.
Aye.
Consent agenda.
I move approval of consent agenda items as listed.
Moved and seconded. Hens.
Aye.
Merkin.
Aye.
Basil.
Aye.
Moving on to public hearing items, we have discussion and consideration of resolution 23-63 approving disposal of certain real, certain real estate to the Iowa Department of Transportation. Good morning.
Good morning. Well, I'm Pat Chehan. I'm the special projects ranger with Story County Conservation. I'm here today, I believe the attached agreement you have is for the disposal of .18 acres on the heart of Iowa Nature Trail. This is going to the Iowa Department of Transportation. This is leading towards the development of the three-lane traffic on I-35 going northbound. It's been vetted through our conservation board and it's been seen to have no impact on our heart of Iowa nature trail and future plans. Do we have any questions on that?
They only cost us the lighting in the tunnel. Is that correct?
As far as I know, the only cost we'll have in the future is part of the lighting. They will have a lot of the infrastructure in there. We'll just need to do the wiring. Luckily, our engineer with our engineering group is the one that designs most of it for the DOT. They've done a lot of the work down in Ankeny, those areas down there. So in this sense, as long as it does require lighting, which we'll need, we've, we worked with the DOT already, talking about the different paint schemes we could have, being gloss, semi-gloss, to get a little more illuminated in there. You know, being a multi-use trail, you know, we want to make sure there's plenty of lighting, but not too blinding, especially for request trains and stuff like that. So, so yeah, we're gonna be vetting that out further and getting as nice as we can.
Great. Any other questions? Okay, with that, we'll open public hearing. Anyone wishing to make comment can raise your hand on Zoom or step forward to the podium. Seeing no one will close the public hearing, and I will entertain a motion on this item.
I move approval of resolution 23-63 approving disposal of certain real estate to the Iowa Department of Transportation.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Merkin.
Aye.
Hens.
Aye.
Basil.
Aye.
Thank you, Pat.
Thank you.
Next public hearing item, we have first consideration of ordinance number 306, amending chapter 85, general provisions and definitions, and chapter 86, district requirements of Story County Code of Ordinances, land development regulations to establish setback requirements for hazardous materials pipelines.
Good morning. Good morning. I don't have much to add other than what you've just said. Happy to take any questions. And I will note that under state code, we can have two here if we published prior. We have done that. We do have an option to waive those though, if we take a separate vote. So this morning you can either set second consideration for next week or waive second and third with a separate motion.
And we're, we're having this right now because there was concerns about publishing the first time around. I'm just making sure.
Yes.
Okay. Any questions? All right, with that, we'll open the public here. Anyone wishing to make public comment can raise your hand on Zoom or step forward to the podium. Seeing no one will close the public hearing, and I will entertain a motion on this item.
I move approval of ordinance number 306 and waive second and third consideration.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Hens.
Aye.
Merkin.
Aye.
Basil.
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to additional items, we have discussion and consideration of draft requests for proposals for disaster debris site management plan.
Actually, do I need to, did I say ordinance or resolution 306 on the last one?
I heard ordinance.
Did I say ordinance?
Yeah, I just want to make sure.
That's what I remember.
Okay.
So this RFP is related to the purchase of the debris management site. We are requesting a plan for the use of the site, how to lay it out, how to separate debris appropriately, how to make sure we're meeting all state and federal regulations. I did have Melissa take a look at this as well as Ethan. I think when we get back the quotes, you know, a lot of the planning would be, how do we pick up debris from people's properties and bring it to the site? Do we need pre-approved contracts with haulers? And depending on the, the cost, we could cut some of that and just focus on site design. But I, we do need some of those other pieces figured out, so I thought let's just put it all in here and see. So I'm happy to answer any questions about it.
This doesn't, the RFP doesn't bind us to collecting.
No. No.
Because when we did the debris site before, we said.
A drop-off.
Drop-off.
And so what I wrote in the RFP would be a plan that includes discussion of when collection would be appropriate and challenges posed by private roadways, FEMA reimbursement for that.
Yes, exactly the issue.
Yes.
Private roadways.
Okay.
Got it. It's good to think that through.
Yes. Just in case there is a situation where it's, you know, folks can't get the debris to the site. I mean, what's the threshold? What do we need to consider?
You just gotta look at is what's the greater good.
Right, right.
Exactly. I don't have any other questions.
All right. I would entertain a motion.
Hold on a second. I would move approval of the draft request for proposals for disaster debris site management plan for 616, 160th Street, Nevada, is presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Merkin.
Aye.
Hens.
Aye.
Basil.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving to departmental reports, general assistance quarterly report. Good morning, Erin.
Hi, Erin. Gosh, it's hard to believe it's already time for another quarterly report.
I know. I feel like I was just here.
Yes.
The same thing.
Not that I don't want to see you, so I'm fine. We didn't have, so we actually, I'm just kind of, probably skip more to my narrative. Because you can see all the numbers and that kind of stuff here. But we ended up seeing the same, the same amount of families and, and single households, which is kind of strange. We, probably most of note is that beginning December 1st, we went back to having walk-ins instead of scheduling appointments. It was one of those things where I kind of just started, it was, it was becoming a bit problematic for the service coordinators and their schedule to begin with. And, and being scheduled out so far, sometimes three weeks in advance. And then you have the people that don't show, but then you have people that still walk in the door that need help. And I think we just kind of got locked into it with the whole COVID thing and the social distancing and, and not really knowing how the actual individual, you know, time with these people would go. And so we, December 1st, we just said, come on in between 8:30 and 4:00 and we'll process your application. So the first three to four days of the month are a little bit very active. So a lot of people at the beginning of the month. I think this month we, we saw 19 people or families in the first day. So that's, that's a lot. But the thing about it is, is it does taper off. And then, and then when there are those times for them to be able to, when it's quiet, to do their work and to keep up with it and that kind of thing. So the feedback that I'm getting from Chelsea and Wendy is that this is, this is a good practice and they like it. So, and it feels less stressful, I think, for everybody. So. And we can deal with, you know, we can talk with people when they're at the moment of their crisis and that kind of thing rather than putting them off. It's also helped with the phone calls and things as well. So. Um, so as I said, we assisted the same number of applicants this past quarter and we approved $1,400 more in rent assistance and had a decline in our utility assistance, which is normal this time of year because of liheep. We just don't see as many people with utility concerns because if they're eligible for that, it protects them from being shut off and that kind of thing. So we'll expect that to kind of go up again after April 15th. And then one of the things that I put in here is that we're just gonna try to focus a little bit more this year on getting, getting some folks interested in the service coordination piece of what we do and focusing our efforts there. And when I said I did 43 interviews for Veterans Affairs over the last quarter as well. So, any questions?
My only question is, the number of people that come in, how's your transition? If they come in and they present they need more help with accessing mental health services or disability services, is CICS being right there able to?
Yep.
Make that right away as well?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, we actually had a lunchtime conversation with Kathy Johnson about that one day. Just appointments with people, you know, with mental health concerns that come in. And yeah, them seeing people more on a, on a walk-in basis when they're at that, that point. And I think their activity has increased just probably in the last six months as well. So.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
And then coordinated intake, how's that going?
Good.
Good.
So we met with Good Neighbor and Salvation Army again a couple of weeks ago, just to kind of talk things over. I think we're gonna periodically do it. We're gonna do it once, I think, once a quarter, just so we can stay on track and that kind of thing. And then we're still looking at bringing some of those other partners in with us. And it might not just be a full, you know, a full way of doing it like we do with Good Neighbor and Salvation Army. I think there are pieces that we can do with MICA and that we can do with St. Thomas if they don't want to use our computer, you know, program side of it. So we're just gonna check that out, I guess, over the next, you know, few months. And then we're getting all the stakeholders, all the rent and utility folks together that I can, February 14th, just to talk about everybody's programs and, and what they've got going on and get some feedback for what we're doing and that kind of thing. We used to meet all together when we were coming up with this centralized intake concept. That's where it came from, was this whole group of, you know, the city. Oh, St. Thomas came to that. And sometimes primary healthcare, you know what I mean, Bridge Home back then. And so that's where the whole concept came from, but then once we got started, we quit all meetings together. And it's something I hear from Vanessa every time I see her. She's like, I miss us. And I'm like, yes, it's, it keeps everybody, you know, knowing who's working where, giving you nice contacts with those other agencies so that you have people you can call if you need to. And then also knowing what everybody's doing.
Right.
Because sometimes there's things out there that we don't know and could give for resources for people. So.
And it always feels better if you're referring someone to someone when that's someone you know and already have a relationship. That really helps. I got an email from Naco today about webinar, local strategies for reaching out families and young children.
I saw that. I signed up for that.
Good, great, wonderful.
Yeah.
Wanted to make sure you saw that.
Yes.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, thank you.
We have no other reports. Any upcoming agenda?
No.
No. Now it's time for public comment number two. Comments from the public on items not on this agenda. Board may not take any action on comments due to requirements of. Board may not take any action on comments due to requirements of open meeting slot, but may do so in the future. Anyone wishing to make public comment, you can raise your hand on Zoom or step forward to the table. Seeing no one will close public comment number two and move to liaison assignments, committee meeting updates and announcements from supervisors. Supervisor, let's start.
Sure. It's like I have a board of health meeting this afternoon. Tomorrow I do have on the calendar the years of service and we have conference board meeting tomorrow night. Wednesday morning I have a workforce meeting. I know there's leadership aims, I believe as well at the same time. So I'll try to pop in for a part of that. And I have a meeting in the afternoon, Greg. And then it looks like, sorry, I'm used to doing this on my iPad. I also have a oh, Friday I do have, I think I have a de-cap meeting, not quite sure on that. I've got emailed on that. I'm going to leave early on Friday, leave after de-cap if that's what I have. That's National Night to Shine, which is a prom dance for individuals with disabilities. And so I'm going to help my son get out dressed up to go partake in, in that. And that's what I have for this week.
For the rest of the week, here's a service breakfast tomorrow morning, A D C executive board at noon, conference board meeting and a quarterly nine oh one service board meeting right after that in the evening. So long day. Thursday, leadership aims. Iowa Creek WMA in the afternoon and Farm Bureau annual meeting in the evening. And Friday I'll be in Fort Dodge for a board meeting with second district correctional services. And all our board chairs have a meeting in the afternoon via Zoom with DOC Director Skinner. I think that's pretty much it.
A lot of the same, a lot of the same meetings. Tonight I have a boost meeting tomorrow. In addition to the years of service, I have a scan leadership team meeting. We have our first DEI committee meeting tomorrow afternoon. And then conference board meeting tomorrow night, leadership aims Thursday. Farm Bureau meeting Thursday night and then Friday I am flying to DC for the NICO Legislative Conference. And I will be back Wednesday afternoon, early evening. Also just wanted to remind everyone that we sent out information on citizen of the year. So if you know anyone who you think would be a good fit for that recognition, make sure you reach out to Leanne and/or Bryce and get that recommendation turned in. I will win that. Second. Moved and seconded. Headends.
Aye.
Merkin.
Aye.
Basil, aye. We are adjourned.
Thank you.
So you're going through Wednesday.